All right. Meeting is now in order then.
We'll do a roll call. Trustee Cisco Smith.
Present.
Trustee De Bell.
Present.
Trustee Hakes.
Here.
Trustee Williamson.
Present.
And Trustee Loftus.
Before we go further, I just want to say welcome to Bill Loftus, our new member of the Board of Trustees. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we'll be saying more about his wonderful background and education. It's delightful and his love of libraries when we do a focus on him in the next newsletter. So, welcome again, Bill.
Thank you all.
Sherri Cosby will not be with us today, so CJ, would you like to open with that special advisory, please?
Yes, thank you. So this meeting will be conducted in accordance with Governor Newsom's Executive Order 28-20 relating to the COVID-19 virus. That order suspends several provisions of the Brown Act related to telephonic participation by the Library Board of Trustees, staff members, and the public due to applicable public health orders issued by the county health officer. The city council chambers will not be open to the public, and library trustees have the option of participating telephonically. Members of the public are strongly encouraged to watch the meeting on K O C T Cox Channel 19 or livestream it Thank you.
All right, thank you very much CJ. We'll start now the regular business. Do you all have the minutes? Is there anyone that would have anything they'd like to say about it before we go further?
I move approval. I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Approval of invoices, are you ready now, shall we wait? Would you like to?
I'm ready now, I can't find the motion.
We could come back to that, why don't we?
Where's the?
Let's go to consideration of the financial report for June and July.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I can do it.
All right, go ahead. All right, item B.
With the invoices and didn't make the relay. To approve the invoices dated May 28, 2020 through August 24, 2020, and open purchase orders as shown on the attached list dated August 24, 2020, for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second? Shawnee? Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration of financial report, item 1C. CJ was?
Question. Down in item 1B, the Hill Street Country Club artist stipends for $7,182.
I'm sorry, wait a minute.
I can't understand you.
We're on 1C.
Sorry, I'm on the wrong date.
C.
E. Yeah, okay.
Did on that.
Yeah, okay, so. Yeah. Okay. The items on the financial report for June and July. Some of the reader services for children, the percentage year to date. 9% for eBooks, 200% Spanish materials. And then I do have a question about the bindery after I hear about the other ones.
Okay, so yes, you will notice in our library books and materials budget that our eBooks are at a much higher rate than what was intended for those items. Once COVID-19 hit, we as selectors got together and determined that eBooks were where we should be putting a large majority of our resources, so that's why you'll see that those amounts are almost double what they normally are because we had taken some of the resources away from the print materials at that time. In regards to the Spanish items, what we were doing is really taking advantage of one of our staff member. He takes a trip to Guadalajara to buy directly from Spanish publishers. So we do give that staff member some leeway in the amount of funding that he expends. And there were a lot of great resources at that particular event, so we encouraged him to take advantage of that. That does happen kind of in a lump sum because he's purchasing when he's there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that bindery and replacements, that that number is a little low because the library's not open?
Well, I think really historically, the amount that we're using for bindery has been reduced. One of the disadvantages to using a binder is that there's a lot of staff time that goes into processing those books, both in advance and after the binding has been replaced. So my response to that would be primarily because it's so staff intensive to do that type of work that we haven't, we haven't put our energies into doing the bindery work.
Okay, thank you CJ.
The wonderful thing about that is even with those additional expenses, you came in, we came in on 96.5. Amazing, considering, it really shows that you did some quick shifting and effectively.
Our, you know, materials purchasers have done really an extraordinary job in maintaining that budget and being very, very thoughtful about what they're selecting for our public.
Yeah, well done. Any other questions on the financial report? I don't know whether you can answer this CJ, but I just had a question. On the July 2020, so now going into the 2020, 2021, I noticed that the budget for this year is about $478,000 less than what we had for the prior year. And I can't remember if there was anything that we had discussed that was a one-time last year or whether we knew that we were going to have that. No, if not, we can check further.
You're referring to the department summary by program, is that the page that you're on?
Yes, uh-huh.
And?
And looking at that compared to in the past for what we had.
So those summaries are salary, maintenance and operations.
Yes.
Interfund money. We will spend the money over the year and we'll track it. Sometimes there are subscriptions that need to be paid in advance, so that can sometimes, you know, be reflected in the amounts there. We do have some vacancies, current staff vacancies, both in adult and support services as well right now. And we do have some staff that's been furloughed over all of our business units.
Yeah, so I know that we were under by $200,000 over by the end of the year, but I just see that that's quite a difference. I didn't know whether there was any information about having any reductions in the salaries overall, so. If not, we can.
Well, we have not, we have not been able to fill those positions.
Yeah, well.
Those positions have been frozen.
I understand they haven't been filled, I was just seeing the difference between of that amount, whether we actually did take a reduction overall in terms of approval for the year. So we can, we can carry, we can carry that forward as a question.
Yeah, no, I don't.
It's kind of a done deal, so.
And this is really, this is really, this is our fiscal year that's just started.
Right.
So, but no, there, there, the reduction was in M and O. So there was a 10% in maintenance and operations that was taken off. But, but our, you know, our salaries, it's just those are unfulfilled positions right now.
Right, 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 okay. All right, that's all I had on that. And any other questions? 1D, consideration of the circulation statistical report.
Move for approval?
Oh, we don't have to do that.
I have no questions.
I have a question though.
Shawnee, remove your mask a little bit.
Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry. No, no books have been purchased for July and I assume August. Are we just purposely freezing that whole section of the budget?
B.
Hi, no, that money will be spent. I think probably it just hasn't been given funding in the total in the report.
Oh.
We are continuing to spend our.
Well, I had thought so because when you go and it says, you know, new books purchased and there's a list. That's why I asked, because it doesn't show here.
Sorry, what, could you just be clear on where we are? Are we still talking about the financial report? Are we talking about the circulation, I'm sorry?
I was talking about library books and materials.
Okay, so you're still on.
For July and August.
All right, I'm sorry, I thought we passed that, that's why I was asking where, your question.
Yeah, that money will be spent.
So we're not frozen?
Okay, we will move to consideration of the circulation statistical reports. Quite a bit.
So I think something to maybe point out in this particular report is that our E resources from May 2019 to May?
From May 2019 to May 2020 are up 54% as well as in June to June and July to July. Each one is about 50% increase in our E resources.
Yeah, I thought it actually looked a little more than that, that's, well, we can see that we were ready and needed, that's great. And these items under deliveries, you want to say a little something about that?
Sure, so deliveries are something, as soon as COVID-19 hit, your support services staff convened and said, what, what can we do? How do we get books into people's hands in our community? And that's exactly what they did. They've figured out very quickly, a very efficient way to do home deliveries. They're doing anywhere, I think today they had 85 home deliveries. In the last couple of weeks, there has been such interest that they've started to break the deliveries down into districts. So they're not delivering citywide every day, which they were doing really quite incredibly. They're delivering by two districts per day. So any given day, we have two of our staff members taking out our courier van to people's homes to make deliveries. The response has been outstanding. We have an entire wall in our library that has thank you notes from kids and adults and seniors that are just so grateful, not only for those materials, but for that connection that they're so, has been so important in their lives, so.
I was actually stunned, I wanted to say, I think it was two days after everything shut down and I had like four books that I had planned to order. And I called in and spoke with Jorge and he said, we'll deliver them. And I went, really? And, and there they were, it was just great.
I think another piece to that is there aren't other libraries that are doing and providing that service. So Oceanside Public Library is, is very special in that respect.
Very good.
I have received a lot of phone messages from friends and so on, just saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I've tried to pass that on to you and especially to staff because all of the phone calls I've gotten have been incredibly impressed by the services that our staff is doing.
Yeah, same thing.
I do have one question.
Yes.
How often do you empty the book return at the branch?
So those returns are getting emptied several times per day. We are quarantining books, so if people have returned books and they notice that those books are not taken off their account immediately, that's on purpose. We are quarantining the books for several days and then checking those items in.
Oh, good, thank you, because that call, I've had several. Say they go to their account and it says they've checked out 14 books and they've returned eight of them, you know, or whatever.
Yeah, well, please, you know, send those people to our main number, 435-5600. If they have any questions, Sherri Noel will be the happy voice behind the, the phone and she'll help them resolve any issues that they might have.
She has nothing else to do.
Phone calls, that's why.
Well, I, I was really impressed though to see the, the tick that just went up almost immediately in all the E, the E learning areas, so it's eBooks and all, it's great.
Yeah, I had the feeling with the phone calls I got, where people had felt so isolated and so turned off by everybody. And suddenly the library knows they're alive and that that really helped them.
Okay, did I have, oh, 1E, program statistical. Anything you'd like to say about that since everything went in a different direction so much?
So I think what you see in, in 1E, you know, in, in April, we were able to pretty quickly pivot and turn all of our book clubs, our all, we have book clubs for all ages, turn them virtual. So you see, you know, we did a number of programs in April with a Zoom format where it would, it would be a regular book club meeting, but they would just be meeting virtually. As you turn the page and you look into May, you see that we, we were starting to get our feet underneath us and say, what else can we do? And our programmers met, our adult services and our teen services and our youth services met and they said, what can we kind of easily implement? And so we did our, some of our game nights, virtual gaming. The teen response to virtual programs has been very positive, as you can imagine. And so it's actually been a really cool way to, you know, reach new teens. We've, we've seen that there's been an increase in the number of teens that are actively participating in, in the programs. You turn the page and you see that June, we were able to, to really kind of continue that, that process of bringing on more programming. We, you know, we implemented a fiction reading club in our literacy department. The literacy department also had to pivot and say, how do we reach our learners? So you see that we added, we added programming in June. And then if you turn the page and see July, the programs are kind of.
Gets bigger and bigger.
They're off the page. So not only did we implement our STEAM camp, but we also did lunch at the library where our staff went out to Libby and Mission Elementaries and Boys and Girls Club and John Landis and Melba Bishop. And they distributed almost 3,600 kits. And those are our books and, well, art, art kits, craft kits, that those were distributed in conjunction with the lunches. And then we also gave away almost 8,600 books. That lunch at the library was a grant program. Initially, it was a $10,000 program and they ended up giving us additional funds. So we had to bring that to the city council in a staff report to accept that amount of $12,500 in funds. But we really put that, that state funding to great use. We got a lot of books in a lot of kids' hands.
Good.
Yeah, I think there's more on that and later too, I think we have another report on that. I said later, I think we have another report on that too.
Yes, we do have another report on programs.
That was so timely.
Can I ask you about the graphic novel book club, and it's under adults? So I didn't know you had one of those, that's the reason I'm asking about it. So is it teen and adult or is it?
So actually, we had, we had been doing that in person with adults, the adult graphic novel book club. And it was, it was for adults. But what some of our programmers have started to do is offer some tween and teen programming with graphic novels as well. Because although there is quite a bit of overlap between readers, we, we thought it, it works best to have an age group together discussing a title, so.
Great, good.
I'll look into that.
Yeah, very good. The teen one? I don't know that you can join that group.
No.
The graphic novel.
Oh, you don't think she's a teen member?
Okay, all right, thank, thank you so much. All right.
I have, I have one additional question. What do you do when there's only one person that shows up for these clubs? Do you cancel it or do you discuss it with whoever the librarian is in charge of it?
Well, I think probably what you're looking at is the fiction reading club in literacy. So a lot of the literacy programming is one-on-one, so it's with a learner and a tutor. So inherently, that department works very well, one-on-one, and they're very used to that. That particular.
What I was looking at was the Teen Rainbow Reads.
Oh, okay.
Do reads.
You know, anytime that someone shows up to one of our library programs, we honor their presence. And we, you know, we meet with them, we discuss, that would be, that's a book discussion group. And then we as programmers, I think you'll see a couple items from now, take a look at our programming on a regular basis. And now especially because it's changing, it's shifting and changing so quickly. We really want to be responsive to what the needs are, but we also really want to honor when people show up and want to talk about a book, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Question I had, it was just really interest and curiosity, was on the college after COVID, what you need to know. Can you, do you know anything about that, how it went or?
So I didn't attend that particular event, but it was held by our teen librarian. And her, her response was that everybody there really felt very invested in the subject and felt like they got a lot out of the program. It was a, it was an instance where we brought someone in to talk about the subject. It's not something that we are experts in. So we brought an expert in to talk about what, you know, what school looks like, what college might look like. Because one of the things we really like to do as a library is help inform our public and give them the tools they need to be successful and, and feel good about moving forward, so.
No, I thought that was really good. I'm actually working with one of the campuses and I know it's absolutely down. It's just closed, you know, big, huge campus and it's closed.
And there, we are working on scheduling another similar program like that because the response was positive.
Good, very good, good, good. Any other, anything else? Thank you. All right, we are on library services, I believe, for during the, an update on the impact on library services. Do you have anything you want to say about that? Any recommendations or anything to staff? No?
So I'm just going to step back for just a second. We did not have any public comment that came in for number two.
You're absolutely right, I'm sorry.
Just so we have it on the record.
Yes, thank you.
And in the future, if we do have public comment, as long as we're meeting in here, I'll give it to you guys ahead of time prior to the meeting to review, okay?
All right, I skipped over it because I knew we didn't have any. Thank you for the record. All right. Item three then.
Okay, so your update on COVID-19 impacts on library services. So your libraries have been closed 161 days. We've moved all of our programming online and we've obviously started a lot of new programming. We reevaluated our books and materials budget, found that we really drastically needed to increase our E resources. During that time, we took advantage of two separate grant opportunities to apply for emergency eBook funding. So we did receive one for $5,000. The other one is still, we're waiting to hear on that. And we are working on a partnership with our resource centers to support the work that they're doing. We've learned that the resource centers, of which there's four in the community, three that are really actively working, have been drastically impacted with the library's closures. They've had families in, in need of support signing up for school, help to get onto computers, homework help, any, you know, any number of, of really pressing needs that they, that they're seeing. So we met with the director of the resource centers late last week and we're putting together a, a plan to get some of our hourly extra help staff out to the resource centers to support this need that we're seeing in the community. So we're doing whatever we can, even though our physical buildings are closed, to, you know, to support our community, to try and help address any, any needs that we are seeing.
Oh, that's wonderful.
I have a question. Give me a name of one of the community resource centers.
So there's Chavez Resource Center, there's Libby Lake Resource Center, John Landis Resource Center, and Crown Heights Resource Center.
Okay, thank you. Was having trouble putting them in their.
Those four, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So those are also locations where our bookmobiles are regularly at. So we do, you know, stop at each one of those resource centers weekly. So without our, our services running, we will still be getting staff to, to support those communities.
Good. Thank you.
I have a question back on the two separate grants, the one that you're waiting on. Could you just say a little about that, like what it was for and how much you hope to get?
So those two grants were opportunities from the California State Library. They were emergency E resource opportunities. So we've applied for both of those. The first one, we received it and we use that funding to buy primarily online eBooks and audiobooks for young people. Because of our Set Up to Succeed project that we have been working on the ocean, on with the Oceanside Unified School District, we have put a library card in the hand of every child in Oceanside. And so we've seen a dramatic increase in interest in materials, that the kids have the, the cards, they want to be using them. So we applied to supplement our E resources in, to support the, the need.
And the one that you're waiting on?
It's the same opportunity, it's just a round two.
Great, terrific, round two, I like it. You just said something about the Set Up to Succeed, I just will raise it now. I remember in the minutes from last time, Mr. Feller was asking, is it, is it likely that that could be extended to, you know, other school districts? I was wondering anything about that or?
The, the library would love to be able to extend that to, to all the school districts for students in Oceanside. We gave council member Feller an amount, a dollar amount, that it would take in order to, to make that happen. And our staff is, you know, is poised and ready to make that happen. The Set Up to Succeed project has been really, really a great opportunity for the City of Oceanside to, you know, to let all of the students know that they have a library account and they can use their student ID number online as well as if they come to pick up something curbside, placeholds.
Great, terrific, so you've given them some, something to look at, a response, thank you.
CJ, is there any kind of, all right, so I'm thinking of the, the missions project that, do they even still do that? Is it fifth graders?
Yes.
Now, now, okay.
Yeah, that's not a.
Okay.
Not a required.
Well, if, if a student chooses to do a report, let's say on the missions, does a teacher refer them to the library for support materials? Is that in the syllabus or do they have a syllabus?
You know, yes, they absolutely do. So we like, we see a ton of Native American reports, we see a lot of interest in. We see a lot of interest in, in, you know, mission information. So, we're pretty well-versed in what the schools are, you know, having the students look for. I would say now more than ever, we're in a lot of conversation with the district. A lot of the, you know, the libraries are closed in the schools, and, and so, we're reaching out to them. They're reaching out to us and saying, hey, what, you know, what do you have? And one of the things we're really excited about is we're working with KOCT to put together a library video. So, in conjunction with their library account, there is going to be a video distributed to the schools and the principals that talk about what we offer as a library. What can you get with this library card? And all of the e-resources that it, that it makes available to them.
This is wonderful, because Steve's been looking for a stronger relationship in the school for some time.
Yes. Our Youth Services Department under Marie Town has really gone strides to work with Oceanside Promise. You know, the leadership at Oceanside Unified. This Set Up to Succeed project has really helped us get some, some really great relationships, I think, with the school district. And we want to really support them and their students however we can. We're talking with them right now about parent workshops. So, helping to, to, you know, supplement what, part of what they're doing with our, our knowledge of resources and what we, what we have. So, those aren't finalized, but I know Marie Town is, is working that out with the school district right now.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much. We on reopening strategies from CHO? Item four?
Okay. So, let's see. You have seen, you have seen this reopening strategy at your May meeting. So, we just wanted to bring it back up, let you know that we are, you know, we're continuing to address our reopening strategies. We've developed staff training for when that happens. So, we're very clear of, of what the space is going to look like, both for our staff as well as for our public. If you have any questions about the reopening strategies, I'm happy to try and address those. We're really, we just keep looking into the County Health Office for direction. Our Director, Sherri Cosby, is also always in communication with the city manager and the Assistant City Manager, and, and, you know, asking, is this an appropriate time to open? May we, you know, do, may we implement curbside? So, I think there's been really great communication about that. We do not have a reopen date, but when we do, we will be ready.
The only thing, I made a note to myself as I was going through stage one, and I saw a 15-minute timeline at, at computers, and I was thinking, gosh.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if that could be at least 20 to 30. But then I see that that's the amount of time you're offering for stage two. I just, I'm not quite sure, you know, whether that could be-
It's, it's interesting, because this continues to, to change.
A little bit, oh, okay.
You know, almost weekly. So, when we originally wrote this, we thought, you know, there's going to be a lot of need for people to come in, print something out, print out a resume, you know, look up a, look up a job listing. And how do we balance that with having people in the space? You know, how do we support people's needs and, and the work that they need to do, but then also have the space be sort of continually, you know, available for people? So, we're trying to balance that. I think we really know we will have to be flexible. We already have been very flexible with the reopen plan, because, you know, it may, we may reopen at stage two. We may say, given the County Health Office, we can, we can do stage two. And so, it doesn't have to happen-
In absolute secrecy.
We just really, we're focusing on, you know, if we have to have our masks and our six-foot, what's the first step?
Great.
And then kind of create the steps beyond that. But ideally, you know, we wouldn't have to start it at stage one.
Terrific.
Has the staff received training in how to deal with people that don't want to put a mask on?
We have training developed, but we have not implemented it, because we haven't encountered that yet.
So, when the library opens again, you may?
Oh, absolutely. And, and we have a really sound security policy for the library. So, we would address it just like we would any other behavioral issue.
And you will unlikely have some pushback?
We're prepared for that, yeah.
CJ, and I had asked Sherri in terms of the capacity of our internet service for individuals to use it outside of the library. She indicated that the internet services, the Wi-Fi, is available as we speak.
Yes.
And my question had to do with the connectivity issue that students are finding relative to, you know, we've read all about people in Berigo Springs and Alpine, et cetera, where children can't get connectivity. But in the City of Oceanside, we also have families where, because of their financial situation, have had to turn off their TV or their internet service. And so, I don't know if it's an appropriate thing to check with city, with the school district or with library services first, to find out if perhaps families could be made aware of the fact that theoretically, kids could get online in the parking lots, for example, outside of the civic center or over by the Mission Branch. And I don't know if that's something that we want to pursue, or anybody has an interest in doing it. It may not be that many that would take advantage of it, but even children that are homeless, that are living in their cars, perhaps by obtaining the connectivity, it's one way that they could take and get on to the services that they need to continue their education. So, it's a question more than anything else.
Yeah.
I want to say thank you, Bill, for bringing that up too, because we know that it is happening. And we, I also have seen some preliminary reports, not from yet from Oceanside, but actually looking across Los Angeles County. They've actually done, they're looking at the results about the impact of this kind of learning and, and the performance. And there's no doubt about it, that they are seeing a disparity issue. And that just, it breaks my heart, but it's to your very point. And so, it would be really helpful to find out, you know, even if there's a need that the Oceanside School District would need to put out to the public in some way too, for any other assistance. But there's no doubt in my mind that that is going to be an impact, and it is going to affect brown blocks and indigenous areas particularly.
I would suggest talking to the superintendent and finding out, because they were making sure that all the students had Chrome's. And when I was on the board, there was a small, there were some small areas of the valley that didn't have internet service. But I think they redone the Cox Network contract with the city since then, and they may have expanded their coverage there. And Cox does do Oceanside, so that they would, that could get included if there was a problem for service. And I would imagine that most of the families at this point, not all of them, but a lot of them know, you know, what, what parking lots they can get into that would get them service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I've just had two other conversations assigned, but on a similar that with different organizational groups. So, I think there, there's an awareness, and there's still a need. There's still some areas for need.
Yeah.
But we're a transit district, so, you know, you're going to have people coming and going all the time.
I know Brother Benos was asking what they should be doing, what they should be telling some of their- Excuse me, Charlie, I can't understand what you're saying. Brother Benos, I know Quonos is working with them closely. And they've been looking for just this, a place to refer their people, because a lot of their people have children. I don't think everybody realizes, they think of them mostly adult homeless, but it's a lot of families.
Yeah. Absolutely. And I know that the, the school district put out an email to all parents yesterday to say, where are you at with your wireless connectivity? And then, you know, hoping that people would respond, and then-
Go after the ones that didn't.
Right. It did say that they would be contacting the students directly. So, there would be a one-on-one contact. I know the resource centers just upgraded their wireless, just in the past several months, which is great. And I had, in talking with Neighborhood Services, they were talking about hotspots, you know, purchasing some hotspots. So, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think it is a very, it is a very big subject right now, and, and, you know, it's a, it's a big concern.
Well, and in light of the fact that Sherri said that the Wi-Fi is there, it's a matter of making students and homeless individuals aware of the fact that you could come over and log on.
Yeah, it hasn't been turned off. That wireless is still, is still on.
Okay.
Yep.
So, we could develop cellphone launch that also include internet, like they have at the airports?
Yeah, that would be fabulous. Wouldn't that? About a lot of space. That'd be great.
CJ, are we at stage, stage two right now? Do you know, in terms of the reopening? I'm not sure where the county is, where the city. Are we considered stage two? Do you know?
No, I think we're phase- I think phase three.
Okay, good, good.
Great. Great, great, great.
That's better than two.
Yeah. So, that goes to your point that it's really been evolving, even since it's been put together. Good. Any other questions in there? Hello? Councilman? All right. We're going to go on to our trustee work plan, which we have not been able to address actually thus far this, this year, because this is on the calendar year, not the fiscal year, and we haven't met. It's always a bit to go through it. But I thought, especially since Bill is here too with us the first time, maybe it wouldn't hurt to try to go through some of this as quickly as we can.
So, this is the review of what we've done this past year?
Pardon me? This would be where we think we are. And we'll be looking actually at going at the end of the second quarter, moving to the third quarter. This is our, actually in the third quarter, yes?
I wondered why we hadn't already filled in January through March.
Well, I asked that question, so-
So, it was my understanding that when you met in May, you met via Zoom? And so, it didn't, it seemed a little clunky at that time? So, it wasn't something that was on-
Really? I resent that remark.
It wasn't something that was on your agenda, or it was, or it was moved, one of the other?
Yeah. It was a little clunky.
I wondered how we missed that one.
We're asleep at the wheel.
Maybe just to try to introduce for Bill a little bit. So, we have a work plan, the trustees have their work plan, and it's divided into these general goals and tasks, as you see there. And then there are some specific library tasks. And we usually, each quarter, we'll go through them and see, all right, where, where are we? Is there anything specific that seems to be glaringly omission, omitted, that we need to address? Or is there anything that we don't seem like, that we've done that's even excelling? And I'm actually not quite sure even today how we would particularly go through it, other than just based upon our own knowledge of what we've done.
I have some familiarity with it. I was the chair of the committee with the Parks and Rec Commission that put together the work plan, so I'm familiar with the flow. Now you just, now we just need to fill in the boxes.
Right. Yeah, 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 so.
Will we delegate that to CJ to do?
Oh, well done.
I think that if we meet again next month, we should be able to really come back to this pretty-
Yeah, and really, you're, Sherri wanted me to share that your responsibility is really of, of the oversight.
Right.
So, this is your work plan to oversee our work.
Right.
And, you know, that we'll be updating you regularly on these. These are on our radar, because these are things that we're working on. And that, you know, even though some of these might look a little bit different following the past several months, we're still, you know, these are still in our minds. You know, we, we met our budget requirements here in the, in the second quarter. We're going to be giving you a monthly report on that. And I'm happy to, to speak to any of these, or try to speak to any of these if there's something that you are concerned about, or you want us to kind of, you know, specifically hone in on or, or address.
Some sense, Alma, to have CJ and staff work on the third quarter, the third column, and almost in light of the COVID experience, cast off columns one and two? Or perhaps CJ and staff have documentation that could go in those boxes? But I'm just trying to expedite the process.
Sure, I understand. And they will have, based upon what we've heard today, actually, information that will be able to go into those boxes. So, clearly, so that's why I'm saying, I think next month, we really would be able to get back on track with a lot of this, unless there's some particular area today that you would like to have to make a note on.
I think also the order of this obviously has changed, or without anybody voting or anything else, it just had to be. And, and today's meeting, we have already, you've already shown like interaction with the school district and all of this stuff we've been talking about during the whole meeting. So, I think your idea of going to July or August is, is good, because the rest is sort of-
Well, I don't remember what happened in the first two quarters.
Yeah, no, and I agree.
I don't know if any of us remember.
That's what I'm saying, I think that if we really-
Have to read the old minutes.
That's why I was saying, I think that if we waited until next month, we'd be ready to really zero right back in here. So, if you're all comfortable with that?
I'd like to address item six on the general goals and tasks.
Okay.
We haven't gone to six.
Item six on the general goals and tasks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Build partnerships and educational opportunities. We certainly have been doing it with the elementary schools. The, I know that the library has a strong relationship with a community organization of Phil Am. Are there any other partnerships or relationships that we have with other community organizations that address item number two?
Item number two, oh.
The, the communities that are represented in item two?
Well, the Black-
I can say, yes. So, I know that North County African-American Women's Association, we actually have a partnership agreement with the library, particularly for Black History Month. And actually, maybe talking about some other areas possibly soon. And then I think, is, are we going to hear something about, I think, the Japanese, I believe, coming forward too, so?
Good.
Okay, so we have a community that's heavy Latino. We have many Pacific Islander communities here, a lot of people. And so, it seems like that we're not doing enough for certain LGBT. What's the relationship there? You know, do we have a section in the library that a person LGBTQ could go and find the books that they want? Do we have, how do we support certain festivals? I know we usually have a booth or something. But is there more that we can do? I know that Phil Am, uh, certainly, uh, donates back to the library, which is wonderful. And I'm also really interested in outreach to the Latino community, not only in support services like, uh, the buses, but more appreciation, bringing appreciation for the culture to other library patrons. I know that you had a wonderful, uh, exhibit last year, I think it was, on farm workers and people, uh, Latino people that lived in Oceanside back in the forties and fifties. So I just, um, you know, now with COVID, and you guys have, have really beefed up a lot of these areas in, uh, the general tasks and goals, um, and it's wonderful. But the building partnerships and educational opportunities and, you know, does it always fall on, you know, who maintains a relationship? Who, who starts a relationship? So that's an area where, as far as I know, and again, the business partnerships. It just seems that there's got to be a way, other way besides social media to let the community know what a strong, incredible library we have here and the things that we do that no other library is doing.
I have a lot to say. You might have to cut me off. Um, so, uh, you know, in, in addressing that one in particular, I think that one, that item number two is there, and, and number six, um, we are continuously working to be proactive in both of those areas. We're constantly thinking about, um, groups that we can coordinate efforts with. Um, you know, one of the, the initiatives that we have is the Oceanside California Cultural District. And that's overseen by the library and Main Street and the, um, Oceanside Museum of Art and Visit Oceanside. Um, we've created a webpage, oceansideculturaldistrict.org. Please check it out. On that particular webpage, we are working to promote not only the arts organizations, but the, um, the festival, the beautiful, amazing festivals that we have, the yearly events that come about, the businesses. I mean, you have, you have arts businesses downtown here that, you know, really need support right now. They're, they're very, they're suffering. Um, please keep them in your minds. We have a wonderful relationship with, um, the LGBTQ, uh, North County Center. Uh, we have a, um, an adult LGBTQ book club. We also, in the past year, started Rainbow Reads, which is an opportunity for teens, um, to meet in a book club as well. Uh, we always support the Pride by the Beach event that happens yearly. Um, we, this year were able to, last year were able to support the Samoan Cultural Event, which is something that we hadn't participated in in many years. And, um, we're able to really work with Wayne and, and the wonderful people, um, in that group. Uh, we, as far, you know, in, in the Hispanic community, uh, we are very active with the Noche Mexicana Committee. We always have a, uh, one of our staff members that's on that committee to support that program. Um, we also do the, uh, the Dia programs that happen out at the Resource Centers, Day of the Child, uh, that happen in conjunction with the Oceanside Unified School District. Uh, right now, every Saturday, one of my staff members is working with Miracosta on the Latino Book and Family Festival, which is usually a big event that's happening at Miracosta, but now it's virtual. So she's putting together panelists, um, of local Latino, um, artists and authors and dance. So we're, we're constantly thinking about who's in our community and trying to really honor them. Uh, you know, when you're talking about the business community, so we've really started working a lot more closely with Main Street Oceanside, uh, through the partnership we have with the Cultural District, um, and, and supporting the work that they're doing. We also, um, received a, an online product this year. It's very, very expensive product, but they reached out to the library and said, hey, would this be useful for your community? And it's called Coursera, and it's a workforce development, uh, virtual product. So it's a website where you can go in if you're currently unemployed and you can learn new skills. There's also job certifications through Coursera. Uh, that expires at the end of the year. It's very costly because it's an incredible product. And I don't know if we'll be able to continue it. It's about a $50,000 product. But we've seen a huge response to that. Um, so when you're talking about business and, and workforce development, we, you know, we're keeping that in our minds too. Uh, that's become a lot of work of our literacy department, is working with people to help develop the, the skills to, um, apply and, um, you know, find, find employment. So I keep going, but.
Yeah, and so when you say that you support.
Yeah.
What is the support?
For the.
Any of the community groups that you mentioned that you're involved with, and you may be on a, a planning committee or something. Like, like with the Hispanic organization that say, we attend that. There was another one that you mentioned, say, we support that. So I'm just wondering, what, what is the support?
Um, it can look different, um, depending upon the partnership. Uh, usually with these collaborations, it includes, um, meeting to talk about programming, right? A lot of what we do is programs. So, um, what kind of, what kind of programming can we offer? So we're meeting with those groups, um, hearing about what kind of programming they would like to see. And then, um, and then we're creating it from there. Um, sometimes it's, it's staff support to get, you know, certain, certain projects off the ground. Um, with the district, it's just been a lot of like collaboration with them. Um, you know, and then our, our regular stuff that we do as, as a library, right? Like we provide resources that are, um, that we work to be culturally sensitive and diverse.
And so CJ, what I'm, I guess what I'm concerned about is nobody really knows that. Unless you go to a website, I'm talking about community members that are wondering, you know, what does a library do? They may not think, well, what does a library do, uh, to be, to have a partnership with Pacific Islanders? Or, you know, the library always seems to be, now they're really focused on technology. We already discussed those that don't have access to the technology. Is there a way? And one of the, the things I know that the monthly, um, what's going on in Oceanside, is that what it's called?
Updates.
Oceanside Tide?
Yeah.
The updates.
The updates. That is a way to get that out. That's why I was interested in the usage, you know, how many people are listening to that? Social media, some people, you know, I must admit that I only, I think about the library and what they're doing through Facebook. And some people are not members of the library Facebook group, but it still may be on your mind, on their minds. So I, I know at one point we talked about, um, the friends had talked about the yearly report that would go out to all residents in Oceanside. That kind of got watered down a little bit. But, uh, so I just think that the knowledge of what the library really, really does in the community is not accessible to the general public. So it just, I'm not really asking you to solve that right now, CJ.
Well, and part of it's the.
And you are doing it.
Citizen's fault too.
Part of it what?
The citizens themselves, they're not, they're not paying attention.
Well, I, um, Sherry and I have had many conversations on, I think, an extension of what you're saying, Paula, and, and that is, um, we need, we do wonderful work and we need to not be so bashful about blowing our own horn. So, and I think in some ways that's really what you're talking about.
Yeah, when, when we come to our board meetings and we hear about all the awesome grants and the amount of money that we're getting. That.
There at period of time.
I, that's got to be shared out to the, the wider public, and it's too bad that the local newspaper is not with us anymore, but.
Is it the city or the mayor that, um, Mr. Feller, that sends out a newsletter once a month?
City manager's.
The city manager's, maybe some kind of a, a short paragraph every month could be included or every other month of some of the things that we're doing.
There's, there's a bulletin that they provide, I believe it's once, once a month through Terry, uh, in the city manager's office. And it's very detailed and, you know, I, I would say there's a lot of information in there. So don't stick what information you think will get lost in there without, you know, make sure you're pretty specific about what you're saying because
who, what, where, when.
It could be as many as four or five pages and that's not read when it gets to your house.
But a paragraph or two.
Even online.
It's a valid point, and that is it, that it's not one thing, it's not one area. It's really talking about a marketing strategy, I think. And, um, so.
Yes, I think you're right.
Thank you. I, I would say, um, you know, in the past, over the past five months, we've created a marketing slash social media committee. And, and we've been really intentional about that because we heard, we've heard what you all have said. Like, you guys are like this, working and, you know, and you gotta, you gotta look up and say, hey, look what we're doing over here. So we heard that and we started a, um, a committee. And I think they've done a fabulous job. Um, they've expanded, they're not only just on, you know, Facebook, but they're also on Instagram. We're doing a lot of Instagram Live stuff, especially with artists right now. We're going to continue doing that. Uh, we're on YouTube, so we have our own YouTube channel. So, uh, that's something that's new, that has our story times. And so we're trying to use, especially now, use different platforms to reach each other or reach other people. And, um, but yes, we, we should really be touting all of the incredible things that we're doing because it's really a lot of, it's a lot of great work that we're doing. Um, we do send out press releases, the city manager's office. Um, we, everything that we do, we send a press release through them, and that gets distributed to San Diego Union Tribune. And, and the other, about a month ago, we had three different articles on a Sunday. So people are seeing them in, in that format, but then you're right, there's other people that want to see it in a different format. Um, we've started to really be diligent about sending out our email newsletter because although, although that's our readership, we, you know, we want to continue letting them know these updates just like we're, we're updating right now. It's really important.
I'm sorry, CJ, who do you send that to?
Anyone who's subscribed to our email, um, newsletter. So as you apply for a library card, it says, do you want to be on our, our newsletter list?
We applied so long ago, we never had that question asked of us.
It's, it's many, it's many several thousand users that that goes out to.
That's great. Well, I, I think that we've gotten, we have the point. And I think that really zeroes in on item number seven under library specific tasks, which is, is it the last page of this? Oh, next to the last page, where it says, initiate and support marketing efforts that promote the public image in the library, including online social. That's all, that's, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Okay.
So we'll, um, we'll have more to say on that than when we start filling, going back to this.
And, and if there are, you know, avenues that you think would really be of, of benefit to us, for us to address or to focus on, please, you know, we're always, um, looking for new ways to get the word out.
Just hearing what you've, um, just mentioned already, and, and I know you, you have referred, I just see that in the rest of the report too, about Insta, you know, the Instagram and all that you began to do there. So I think we're getting on track with that. That's good because there's a lot to be proud of. So, thank you. Okay, um, so we will be on that for next month. Um, item six, is it?
Yeah.
The, uh, library grant and the STEAM camp.
It's Marie Ah, yeah. There it is. All right, I'm Marie Towne from the Oceanside Public Library. Thank you for the opportunity to present about some of our grant programming and, and summer reading. So first I'll talk about STEAM Camp 2020. This is the third year we've offered Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math Camp for first to fourth graders and also fourth to sixth graders. So we received grants in the past, and again, we received a, um, LSTA Copycat Grant. It's a federal grant funded through the California State Library, $10,000, and that helps us pay for, um, a library staff person to come onboard, an actual teacher, a second grade teacher, who helps implement the, the camps with the kids, and then also the supplies that go along with it. So we were all set to do our tween camp during spring break, the first week in April, but as you know, last minute, everything got shut down and we knew we couldn't do it in person. So, um, like CJ mentioned, we pivoted quickly, worked with our grant monitors and decided to bring it on, online. So we moved the fourth to sixth grade camp into the summer and then planned to continue to offer our first to fourth grade camp during the summer like we traditionally do for four weeks. So that ran from July 6th to the 31st, and then the tween one was the last week in July. And it was extremely successful despite the fact that we weren't able to meet in person. Of course, it would have been, you know, better in a lot of ways to bring the kids into the library and do the camp together, but this actually worked really well. Um, and I think there was a really big need because of the COVID pandemic situation. Families were looking for things to do with their kids that were hands-on and also offered a connection in a community because we did hold daily Zoom meetings, and those also were well attended. So as you can see, we, um, covered different themes. We had a theme each week and participants could sign up for all four weeks or each week. Um, we did Dig Deeper, so we talked about dinosaurs and gardening and rocks and minerals and fossils. Um, the second week was all about superheroes, both fictional and, and real. Um, the third week was Young Scientists, so it was very, um, chemistry experiments and just very, um, general science and very much hands-on, doing kind of the fun experiments that kids like to do. And then the fourth week was all about Star Wars and space, so just really making it accessible. Each week, um, also featured a special guest, so on Fridays we'd bring in an expert in the field, and that was funded by our library foundation. And so it was a nice way to end the week with, um, you know, some scientists talking about space and, and it was just very cool to see how engaged the kids were. The attendance was great. We, um, gave out a hundred and, I think it's on here somewhere, a hundred, yes, thank you. Kits, 168 STEAM camps were delivered. So those we did deliver to, um, the families' houses, um, just like we do the home delivery of books to make it very convenient, and since we weren't offering curbside at that time. And then, um, each, we had seventy-four students participate in the six, that ages six to 12, and an average of thirty-four students participating each week. And then on the Zoom calls, we met Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, each day for about an hour, did some of the experiments, they could share what they did, we read a story or had the, the special guest, and we had an average of 24 kids participate in that as well. So just highly successful. I also just want to really quickly show you, we, um, created sites using Padlet, oops. And this allowed students to share their work and post pictures, and also was a way for us to communicate, um, the instructions and extra activities if they wanted to further their learning. So it's just loading. But it was just really, um, great to see that we could find new ways to repurpose what we already do in an effective way. So what I really would like to show you is some of the pictures that the families posted. So this is where they made terrariums in jars, planted a succulent. And so they were able to share and connect online. Some of their underground animal habitats.
Look at that one.
Just a lot of fun. And then superheroes. As well. Here they, they made zip lines. So you can, I hope it'll play.
Polar bear zip line.
Anyway, so it was another way to kind of connect with the other students and create a community of learners. And here on the pictures, you can see, so on the far left there, they created their garden terrariums and it was neat to see siblings working together to do the different experiments. In the middle, that's Ava here, one of our regular patrons who we missed seeing, but it was great seeing her on the Zoom calls. And she created a battery out of lemons and metal forks and I think some copper wire.
Battery?
Battery, yeah. It lights up the, the digital clock. And then on the far right, JoJo there created a light-up lightsaber card using CO20, the 2032 batteries and LED lights and I believe copper tape. So it was, it was very successful and you could see some of the parent comments, just very appreciative. We've been active participants in library programs for several years and the STEAM camp was the best by far. My daughter begged to even finish the program while being on vacation. And it was really neat to see, we had kids calling in from the beach. We had a boy calling in, he was in Tijuana, but he wanted to show up for the Zoom meeting or kids even in their cars. So it was just really neat to see how much it meant to the kids to be able to take part in this opportunity.
That's wonderful.
And then we asked at the end of the survey, so this is a survey we do at the end of the camps to, to talk about, you know, what they learned and what we can improve upon. And one parent says, "Oceanside has amazing staff. I can't think of much else. They sure have made my kids mad about science and dinosaurs." So this is a, a great program, something a little different because when we do it in person, it is something where parents can leave their kids for a couple hours and, you know, we're responsible for them and, and teaching them stuff with, with technology. But it was great to see that we can do this effectively in an online format and of course, it is a program we want to continue into the future when kids are on break. And actually, even when they're in school, we plan to do a monthly version of this because I think delivering the kits to the kids' houses or offering them, you know, to come pick it up curbside, getting that kit of materials, it almost felt like Christmas to the kids. It also provides that hands-on element that they're maybe not seeing this school year and a little variety. And I think because the kids aren't doing distance learning right now primarily, they're not in school necessarily as long, so this offers more opportunities for engagement, fun and education.
Great.
Yeah.
I love the butterfly on her mouth.
Yeah. And, and you know, Marie, it's actually in all of us, actually, it's, it's where the world is going. I mean, I, I know that we need to have more interaction, you know, with each other, that's important. But this artificial intelligence, I mean, that's where, that's where we're going. So it's great to see these young kids, to hear someone say they're mad about science, you know, if we can just get more kids like that feeling that way because it's been presented to them through some mechanism that makes them realize, I could do this.
Yeah.
You know?
And this opportunity is of course free to the participants. So I think it, that's a rare thing to offer a summer camp in a STEAM where they're having access to different science and technology and it is free to all, all families.
We can't overlook that. Okay.
All right. So next I'll talk about lunch at the library outreach.
Yes.
So again, this is something we had to shift on. So the last three years, we've offered lunch at the library at our Civic Center Library and we have received California State Library grant funding to support those efforts. But we were unable to be a host site this year, again, because of COVID. But we definitely wanted to support the efforts out in the community and the food sites in Oceanside. So our wonderful senior librarian in children's services worked with the state library and obtained even more funding. So as CJ mentioned, $12,500. In the past, we received five or $10,000. And with that, we worked with the nonprofit group Studio Ace and had them create art kits that were nicely packaged, just quality, well-done. They had videos, instructional videos that went along with it. So we had 1,800 of those created and then we took those out to the Mission Elementary, North Terrace Elementary and Libby Elementary and handed those out with the, the lunch during June, July and into August. And then with the other funds, we created kits with new books. So each kit had two, two books, one for younger kids and one for tweens and teens. And these are nice new books. And then also in those kits were information about summer reading, our literacy program and also like a journal craft or other craft materials to go along with it and offer kids something to do. So in addition to the three elementary sites that we visited weekly from June to August, we also went to the Boys and Girls Club because they were offering free meals for zero to 18, Pro Kids Golf. We went to John Landis and Melba Bishop as well, because the food truck went there. Personally, for me, it was so refreshing. We've been closed and it has been hard, you know, not to be able to offer our services to the families. We love what we do. So being able to go out, you can see some of our staff conducting outreach, I believe that's at Mission. But to see the, I got to go to North Terrace Elementary every week and it was a pleasure to serve those base families because they were so appreciative and they just expressed how they missed their library or how they were participating in summer reading. And yes, my interaction was limited because it's just walking up to their car and giving them their, their book kits, but it was just a really nice outreach to get out and interact with the families. And they were just so appreciative. I think families just really looking for things to do and to better support their kids since they are home.
Wonderful.
So like CJ mentioned, we did provide 8,572 new books to families and then 7,631 book and craft kits were handed out. So we were very busy. You can also see in this picture, that's the community room. And staff were socially distancing and assembly line experts because that was a lot of kits to put together. We may had the money for the materials, but we had to put in the manpower, but we got it done. And we are looking to support lunch because that is continuing, these grab-and-go sites, you know, kids are still needing to be fed at the different schools. There is food insecurity in Oceanside. So that is something that we are still making a priority and a focus, how we can support that.
Marie?
Yes?
So what I've noticed in my, my own family is when the middle school daughter gets something, her younger sister's one is excited to receive, a science project that comes to the house.
Yeah.
I know that they have monthly deliveries of science projects that come in the mail, but that program or that company, it's very expensive for you to do that. So I really like what you're doing here and I think that it creates appreciation for science, not only for the student, but for any siblings that are running around as well.
Yes. And we saw that on the Zoom calls, like even the, the kids that weren't signed up or participated would still be involved in the project. So yes, it is, it's great that it can be kind of a family affair and everybody gets involved. I think it makes it a richer experience.
Marie, how did you pick the schools? Was that part of the grant?
That was the, the school district picked those schools?
Their choice?
Mm-hmm. And then we have been working closely with them and have, over the years, developed a relationship with them. They, when we host lunch at the library here at the Civic Center Library, that is through the school district nutrition services.
I know Libby Lake is one of our resource centers, but it was nice to see some of the other schools as well.
Yes, and we have, we do also support the resource centers. We've been, from the get-go, taking out free books and craft kits.
But to see North Terrace and Mission under, that was, that was a plus, I think. And I just think both of these programs that you featured today just showed an incredible amount of creativity and flexibility on the part of staff to go from zero to ninety by having previously planned how to do things and then all of a sudden COVID hits and we've got to radically change the way we do things. Last thought.
We knew we still, there's still that need there and there's a way we could work to address it, so it was great.
My compliments, it looks like you took advantage of one of our local businesses, Ace, Studio Ace. And that's, that's a nice thing too, that, one of the things that they offer and you were able to connect with them to provide a lot of the ideas and materials, so.
Yeah, they've been a great partner and I mean, they just do such great work and.
Supporting Oceanside's businesses.
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
Definitely want to do that.
On, I said on point, yes.
And the, the library foundation was so excited about that program. So I'm quite sure there's not going to be any discussion about whether we will support you again.
Into the future. I hope so. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm also here to talk about summer reading. So summer reading also happened despite the library being closed. This year, our theme was Dig Deeper Oceanside, so kind of digging into Oceanside and getting to know the community. It ran from June 1st to August 8th and it was for children, teens and adults and it moved completely online. In past years, we offered it both in person or online where they could get a paper reading log, particularly with kids, of course, programming in person, but this year, everything moved online. So our numbers did decrease, which we anticipated and which most libraries have seen. So we had 165 adults, 90 19s and 476 children participated and 5,601 books were logged, read and logged in online. What we did, because we were unable to distribute the summer reading prizes while the program was happening because the library was closed, so we did weekly prize drawings with e-gift cards for children and teens and adults as well. And then we also had online programming, of course, our storytimes, we had teen art classes with Studio Ace, which you could see pictured here, that's one of the Zoom calls of the class workshop. And then they were working with clay, so you could see one of the creations, one of our teens made, a clay cake. And then one of our YouTube storytimes that was most popular was the Glenn Sisters, Julia and Nancy Glenn write a series of picture books highlighting different cities and one of them is Oceanside. And even the library is featured in their book, but that was, that was neat. But they, they go to the red and white market and they go to the harbor and the beach and different parts of Oceanside. So that was a neat thing to highlight on our website. And then we had tween and teen all ages game nights that were very popular. And also game, the, one thing that was neat about the all ages game night is we had grandparents here in Oceanside and they invited their grandkids out of state from the Midwest to participate and they all played games together.
That's neat.
Through our hosting. We had writers workshops for adults and as Monica said, the highlight of the summer was a social meetup between Oceanside California Us and Oceanside New York Library. So the adult services team met with the Oceanside library staff in New York and had a, a social meetup and, and Monica says it's the start of a beautiful new friendship and with hopes to do more programming and maybe even bring other Oceanside cities like in Oregon into the mix. So that, that was a lot of fun and I think a neat way to show, show that we might be far apart, but we also can come together.
I thought that was neat. That was great.
Children now and teens are able to pick up their summer reading prizes through curbside pickup the last two weeks and continuing to the end of August. And that includes free new books, you know, temporary tattoos, restaurant meal and museum passes, puzzle craft and a nice little reading bag. So we, those have been going out the door, which we're excited to see. And then we had 488 participants, children, teen and adults, take part in our online programming through June 1st to August 8th. 282 adults attended programs and 206 children and teens. And we did offer 67 programs online throughout the summer.
Wow.
Good.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for letting me present.
Wonderful. And I assume some of the staff that was doing all this was doing it from home?
That is correct. It was a mix of from home and then at the library.
Jeez.
And you know, we've been really appreciative because it's challenged us in, in a good way to learn new skills and kind of be open to new ways of doing program, learning new platforms. So it's keeping us on our toes in a great way and I think making us stronger as we move forward, whatever that looks like, to be able to effectively implement our services.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Wow. And we now have survey report, I think you wanted to share with us?
Yes, thank you. So as you see, we've been doing a lot of programming and what we're always trying to do is take a, a look and really reflect and use statistics on, are we moving in the right direction? So I'm presenting some information today from a committee that I, I was not on, but I'm, I'm very proud of, of the work that they have done to, to make this happen. This is one piece of the puzzle to inform our programming team. The team was Marie Town, Chelsea Egley, Jen Elise Haven, Erin Nakasone, Monica Chapado Merc, Lisa Farnow Haynes, Chris Morales, Edwin Mendoza and Amy Clemmon. So this program survey committee met several times through the summer. They used, our, our staff has really gotten a lot more experience in using outcome-based program planning. You know, what are, what are the outcomes that we want to achieve? And then us work to create programming to have those results. So we implemented a short survey. It went out to summer reading participants. It also went out to all individual program participants as well as through social media channels and email newsletters. So it's not, it's not easy to say exactly how many people it went out to, but it was over a thousand and we received 117 responses, which is great because that's, that's a number that you're able to, to really look at and, and make some, make some determinations, we thought. So we wanted to do this to help, you know, plan and facilitate programs that the public want. So we're, we're relevant and, and, you know, getting the information from them. So one of the things that we really found is that we were on the right track. A lot of the people that responded love book clubs. So as you know, when I started working for the library 15 years ago, at that time, there were no book clubs. Can you imagine? Can you imagine?
In years.
So it was so much fun. I, I started three of them. And since then, I mean, I don't, I don't even, maybe have 12, something, probably about 12. So you know, other things that are popular, social hangouts, hosted presentations. And then we also asked them what format they want to see the programming in. So of course Zoom was, was popular, probably the most, the most popular. And then barriers, as we've, we've been talking about, were technology, you know, having the, the technology to, that's working and I think we're seeing that in the schools too, and, and Wi-Fi access. So I included some data just from one of the, the major questions, right? This wasn't a long survey. We didn't want to say, hey, sit down and take a 20-question survey. We thought, you know, we've got people's attention, they're wanting the programs. Let's just find out a few things that will help us to determine if we're moving in the right direction. So one of the things that we asked was what type of programs do you want, right? Do you want book clubs, storytimes, hosted presentations, social meetups, group workshops, performance or entertainment or one-on-one? And you see the results there. It does vary dependent upon age. So we're taking a look at that as our programmers in each area are implementing, we're looking at that information. at that information. So this particular graph, it's missing some of the content and I apologize for that. The explanation was so long that it just took it off. But you'll see the most popular type of programming is our book clubs based on these responses that we received. Also popular is the third line down, which is hosted presentations. So hosted presentations, the word is missed, the words are missing there, but that's what that fifty-three percent is. Storytimes are popular, but of course that really accommodates a certain age range. Social meetups, also very popular, especially amongst teens. The, the fifth line down there is group workshops. So group workshops and performance, entertainment, we're about, we're about even. Just below that, it's one-on-one. So the twenty-eight responses or twenty-three point nine percent was one-on-one programming. And really, we only are doing that in our literacy department right now. Any, any type of one-on-one programming is just through our literacy department.
It's for what department, I'm sorry?
Our Reads Literacy Program.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes. So I'm going to jump down to the next question. What do you hope to gain by participating? I found this question especially interesting and the, the largest number of responses was for personal growth. People looking to, to have some, some growth. And I, in doing book clubs for about twelve years, I've, I've seen it. I've seen it happen quickly, I've seen it happen slowly, I've seen people really develop their understanding of the world and each other and really an incredible increase in empathy as people attend book clubs because they're reading about people from other perspectives and they're putting themselves in someone else's shoes and it's a very powerful, it can be a very powerful experience. And there's lots of other things people want to do, they want to learn new skills, they want to connect, people want to connect, they want to connect to resources, they want to engage with, with others, they want to discover new interests, they want to be entertained and, and some other things that they, people added those at the bottom. They want to further their career, all of the above. They want to improve their reading ability and hone and enjoy writing skills. So on the next page, this just is a little bit of information about how people want to participate. You know, keeping in mind, this was a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and seventeen respondents, but really it gave us a little, a glimpse of are we moving in the right direction and how, how do people want to get the information? Obviously Zoom, as you see, was the most popular, but people are really open to other ways of us connecting with them and them participating in library programming. The last question is what, what days work best? And you see, the most respondents were weekdays, but some folks had weekends. And then the next question was what times work best? And we found that afternoons worked for the most people and then evenings and mornings were about the same. Keep in mind, I didn't include all of the data, but this breaks down into age groups as well, so, yes.
CJ, when the people responded that the best time for these things is in the afternoon, were you able to crunch what is a predominant age group that responses coming from?
Uh, I don't think I have that with me, but I could get, I could get back to you. We did find mornings were best for younger kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My other question is, you got a hundred and seventeen responses and you had like five hundred people in the book club. Was a predominant response, excuse me, from people in the summer reading program?
The predominant response was from people that were actively participating in library programs already.
Okay, so either summer reading or a book club or something like that?
Yes, absolutely.
So the outreach through social media, were you able to figure out responses from social media? That would include the library's webpage, I guess?
Yeah, um, I don't remember seeing that data included. I, I think, keeping in mind, this is like one step of, you know, of other surveys that we'll be doing and even I think in our next couple of items, we've got some ideas for kind of getting some, some more information. Really, our goal with this was to talk with people who are already enjoying our programs and that was, that was the emphasis on this one.
That was the intent. So from a marketing perspective, you, you basically reached the audiences that you were looking for.
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm just thinking of, you know, doing outreach to the larger community, if, if that's what you were looking for with the survey, did you get it?
Not with this, not with this survey, you know, as we move forward and in different initiatives that we do, of, of course, absolutely. With this particular survey, it was people that were already using our services, yeah.
All right, thanks CJ.
So I just had a few more takeaways, this is the, the last page of this item, but like I said, teens really prefer chat-based programming, they, they feel very comfortable with that, all ages want book clubs and so we had some staff ideas that came out of this, you know, maybe an ask a librarian or reserve a librarian program that we could implement, some sort of showcase Saturdays where we have entertaining quality programs that are put on by other organizations, but we are distributing that content that, that we think would do very well. We're going to continue doing our Instagram Live sessions, our YouTube channel as well and we'd like to do some more Oceanside themed programming, like Marie said, that was incredibly popular. Whenever we do our Oceanside Historical Society programs, there's a huge response, people want to know about their community, so we're a great venue to, to offer that. We're going to continue our game nights and we're going to start another game night because it's been so, so popular. We're going to work to make our programs easier to find on the library website, so if anybody says, wow, that sounds fun, they'll be able to find it and, and take advantage of it. Another initiative that we're going to start in September, we're going to have some Zoom Storytime series and we're going to do one for babies, a series of programs for babies, a series of programs for toddlers and a series of bilingual programs and we're going to have people signing up for those. So we know what, who we're anticipating, how many we're anticipating, we can be a little bit more intentional about the programming based on their ages and interests. And we want to do more workshop and class-based programs. We are still working on our mobile arts workshop, you remember, we got a grant from the California Arts Council to bring arts workshops into the community, this was with the Hill Street Country Club. So we, we, we hired them to do these really professional teaching artist workshops. We weren't able to go out to the senior centers and the works, and the resource centers with those, so we've been delivering them as well as mailing them. So those will continue, that's been a very popular program series and our Yoko So Japanese programming is going to be starting in September. This is a really good example of being responsive to our community. Our librarian who was doing storytimes had some Japanese-American families come to her and say, we, we want more community and we want our kids to have more community and we think it's here and we want your help. And that's really the best kind of programming to happen because you're responding to a need directly. So Erin Nakasone, one of our employees, wrote a California Humanities Grant to do a whole series of Japanese programming and that's coming up in September. It's going to be varied, there's dancing, there's origami workshops, there's Japanese storytimes, so we're really looking forward to that series of programs. We're also, again, working with San Diego Public Library to do our One Book One San Diego programming. That title will be announced in the next week, but we've been working on the programming to get ready for that series and that extends through September. Remember, that's the title that everybody in San Diego County needs to be reading and discussing and attending the programs. So I can't announce it yet or I'd get in trouble, but please look for it because it's such a cool opportunity. The author will be, will be speaking and it's just really, it's, it's going to be good. And wait till you see what we do in, in 2021, so that's, that's what we had for that.
Great. And thank you CJ, that was great. We are now at item number nine. Whoops.
Before we go on, if I could just make a comment since I'm the newbie here. CJ, my compliments to you in terms of being prudent about what kind of conclusions you drew because your sample space was only a hundred and seventeen and it was a specific group, the summer reading group. Any thoughts about additional surveys that may or may not be going out in the future that you could give us a highlight?
So one of your, your items coming up here is about your, our library's strategic plan.
Okay.
So I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities, thank you for, for mentioning that, throughout that strategic plan process to collect additional information. When we did our last strategic plan three years ago, we were out at the supermarkets and we were at the bookmobiles and we really worked to collect and I think we got a lot of great information at that point in time, but that will be incorporated as well as some of the cultivating racial equity and inclusion work that we'll be doing as well.
Well, you know that part of my interest in joining this board was the way I've been impressed with the wide variety of services, the scope and depth of all the library offers and thinking back to our earlier conversation about marketing, I, I personally think you're doing a good job marketing through Facebook and the Oceanside Tide and I got the email today about the Japanese program coming up this, this fall and then the comments in here about people writing grants to get the money and then to deliver the programs and then take a survey to find out if the programs were effective. I guess that this is really a, a big business operation that's being run by, you know, a group of professionals that are limited, you know, in terms of size and scope, but my compliments to you in terms of you, you have the whole package here.
Well, thank you. As you can see from Marie, we have a lot of passion for the work, so thank you and there's always more that we can do.
Sure.
Okay. Item number nine. Thank you.
You all have heard me talk a lot today, but I, I'm excited about this, this item for several reasons. I'm, I'm sharing about work that an amazing committee is doing on creating Oceanside Public Library's racial equity statement, a work plan. This is, the library feels like this is very important work to be doing right now and it's, it's, it's work that this, the committee applied for a grant back last year and so they started work on this in January, they've been meeting since January, it was a competitive application process. We have, it started with three committee members and now it's five and they have done four full two-day sessions with a cohort of other libraries on this work. So they've put a lot of time and, and sweat and tears into it and it's important to them and as well. We are the only library in San Diego County to be doing this, this project, this program. It's a committee led by Monica Chapadomirk, Brad Penner, Jen Elise Haven, Erin Nakasone and Jorge Garcia.
Only library in San Diego? Did I hear that?
The only library in San Diego County, yes.
Wow.
So really.
I hear the only library in San Diego County?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, awful.
No, I just wanted to make sure we heard it's the only library in San Diego County. Okay, thank you.
The, yeah.
What she said.
So where are the other libraries?
Really dispersed throughout California.
Throughout the state.
Yeah, so the, so the vision really is that our work will be part of a dialogue for, for greater city equity, you know, will, will be work that not only other departments can look to, but we've already reached out and been approached by other nonprofit organizations as well that are, are wanting to do similar work and we feel really fortunate that we've been part of this larger cohort and led by professionals in, in the work. I'm not on the, the committee, so I can't, I can't speak to the experience of the, the workshops, but I, they're very intense, they're very personal and, and important and timely and so this is a statement that the committee has crafted and I, I can read it.
Is it the whole committee or our Oceanside committee?
Oceanside, yeah.
Thank you.
So the Oceanside Public Library, a department of the city of Oceanside, is committed to cultivating racial equity and inclusion. By contributing to a more just society, the library envisions a community where all are welcome and enjoy a sense of well-being. When race can no longer be used to predict life outcomes and those outcomes for all groups are improved, racial equity has been achieved. Yet in Oceanside, in California and across the United States, a person's race remains a key predictor of well-being, access, opportunity and safety. The library is central to its community and an essential part, excuse me, participant in the movement for racial equity. The library is proud of such a role, but should not become too comfortable with an image of progress and achievement. Only by acknowledging the difficult realities of life for many in Oceanside can the library's vision lead to action and change. The library is working to achieve racial equity both within the organization and throughout the Oceanside community it serves by conducting self-examination and making a long-term commitment. The library will emphasize racial equity and inclusion in its strategic plan with these goals. Eliminating racial barriers in services and practices, creating and maintaining an environment of diversity, inclusion and respect, reaching and engaging people of color, addressing challenges by facilitating conversations and partnerships with organizations and leaders who work with Black, Brown and Indigenous communities. Building a workforce which across the breadth and the depth of job classification reflects its community.
Nice.
And where is this statement being publicized?
So currently, no one has seen the statement. We, we wanted to bring it to you all for, for you to take a look at it first.
I think it's, I think that it is incredibly well done. I really am pleased to see us doing this. I would definitely back sending this out in every form of public.
Alma, is this a kind of item that's an action item, action item where we take and adopt this statement on behalf of the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it would be a measure, I mean, it would be a motion and, and a vote to do this. The only other question I had was, I wrote to Sheri on Saturday and asked her a few questions about this, especially about the training, the C R E I training. Was that conducted through the California Library Association or through a grant?
That's, that's a question I had also. The training.
I think it was through the California Library Association, yes, but I can, I can check that and get back to you.
Okay, because, yes, it's a statewide effort indeed and, and the other question I asked her of her and it's one I haven't been able to obtain from other city staff members and perhaps Mr. Fellers could comment, do we have a city statement on racial equity? Do we have a city statement on racial equity or a resolution? To the best of your knowledge, Jack, relative to all that's going on, we've had some demonstrations in the city, they've been peaceful, it's all been good, but, you know, everybody's awareness has been heightened since George Floyd, and I was just wondering, it's unusual for a department to adopt a position statement when the umbrella organization, the city-
Right.
Hasn't got such a statement. So I'll stop talking and let Jack answer.
The answer is, I'm not sure that there is something as specific as this.
Okay.
But I will tell you, this city is light years ahead of the cities that you saw with the really bad demonstrations. It is, so we're doing something right with our neighborhood policing and the connections we have with the community. So it wouldn't surprise me if there is something, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
But we can inquire-
And my question wasn't intended to suggest that we're not doing good things, but oftentimes in these days, I know some of the school districts are adopting such a resolution-
Right.
In terms of racial equity and-
Apologies.
I don't know, through your own influence, perhaps you could ask-
I think also, thank you for bringing it up in that manner, is whether we would be stepping ahead of the city if there's an intent. I think that's a valid question to ask.
I'm not about it.
I think we could go ahead and adopt it, but the question is, the umbrella group, City of Oceanside-
Right.
The question about where they are, it's just a question.
Right.
So before the city would adopt this, there'd be an attorney looking at this.
No, I wasn't suggesting the city adopt this. I was suggesting the city adopt a statement on racial equity, one that was drafted by our attorney, by Deanna, or-
Probably even this, probably has to be-
Could be, sure.
As well. And so you may-
Thanks.
And maybe by the next time we have a meeting, that both could be accomplished.
Well, then, if that is true, Jack, we could suggest that this be forwarded to the city for information purposes and to the attorney, city attorney.
Well, you can-
Would that be the next step?
Through your director, you would have that influence for sure, whether it's Sherri or CJ or whoever's.
Well, I think that we could do a vote of confidence or a support statement to say that we approve of this and would like to see this move to the next level. And if there's other purview that needs to be given to it, that's fine, but we would like to move it along so that it could become a statement that we could endorse.
Right.
I think that's a very good way to do it.
I have included the question in the minutes, that the question arose about the appropriateness of the department adopting a statement before the city has.
But at this point that we are, we are not approving it, but we are certainly endorsing?
Yes.
Okay.
You can endorse the idea-
Yes, endorsing, yes.
And the, looking at the process, I'm sure.
We only have authority over us. We're not suggesting-
Exactly.
We are suggesting for the city to take a look at it.
So it's probably how it needs to go is through the city. The hierarchy upstairs, if in fact it's something that is going to be something that every city department is responsible to.
Sure, thank you.
So we'll go through Sherri to take it to the next step.
And CJ, I understand you weren't part of the CREI training, but maybe I had asked Sherri if she could tell us more about what that consisted of, if it was through a singular workshop, was there several weeks of training? You know, from what I've read about this training, it is extensive or it can be limited in terms of actually solving what you want to accomplish or what your goals are. So anyway, if you could provide us with a report, or if Sherri could give us a report, a few more details about who was involved in the training, how long it took, that sort of thing.
I was wondering that too, between the training, and then when I saw this, I was saying, wow, how did we get here?
Okay. I know that Sherri would be happy to revisit this next month and provide you with more, you know, information on all the, you know, several of the sessions were in-person, and they were all day for two days straight, and it was a convening of, I think, you know, two dozen libraries and their committees that came together, did small group sessions, they watched videos, they did a lot of educational, you know, work. But I'm sure she would be happy to kind of give you more information about that, as well as, you know, maybe go through our library's action plan.
Yeah.
So we have developed an action plan and are working on an action plan to kind of provide us steps as an organization to address, as you see, you know, many different items here, and, you know, one of them is doing some work through our staff development day and, you know, working with our staff. So in a sense, a lot of the work kind of has, it's been library-centric. We were working with other libraries, but we really hope that this work will help inform and create a dialogue with other library departments and city leaders and city manager's office and make the change and the actions that we have been working so hard on.
My interest was triggered by the word training, and you're talking about staff development, and I think this is a time and place where cities, school districts, organizations are talking about retraining staff to be more aware of issues of racial inequity, racial sensitivity, and whether it be police departments or library staffs, it would, it seems like everybody is in need of more information about the whole issue of racial inequity.
Yeah.
And this might be a program that would have application to other departments. I don't know about the water department or, you know, the city police, but that was its attractiveness to me to find out more about.
So we can bring that back next month for-
Yeah, absolutely. I know, I'm sure we're going to be looking at this and digging and delving deeper.
I have a second comment here. Are you wrapping this up?
No.
Okay.
I wanted to say that I think the training is, of course, a starting point, and it is essential. I just read an article the other day that was saying, while it is absolutely essential, it still goes beyond that. So we really want to begin to look at, all right, once this training is, what are we talking about in terms of outcomes?
Yeah.
And look so, yeah.
And we want to make sure that the time that has been invested continues to be invested in this subject, that it's not, that it's really well thought out, and we're investing a lot in it so that it is something that can be useful in other areas of the city.
So I'm sure that what we've been kind of discussing here is that this really is a top-down commitment from the library to, we had a discussion last year about jobs at the library, how do people, who are we missing, and LGBTQ and people with developmental disabilities, particularly people with autism. There's many, many jobs at the library that would be appropriate for a person with autism to do. And how, you know, is there a way to do outreach to those communities from the library? And the response was, well, someone from the library will let you know because you're interested in that, and then you can contact people to let them know there's a job opening. So that was last year. I haven't heard anything at all, and of course, there's no hiring going on right now. But it does seem kind of a cumbersome way to try to build a workforce with across breadth and depth, you're going to be able to find them. And so I know that these are goals, so I hope that there's more of a structure on how you would reach the various community members.
In terms of, I'm sorry, reach the community members in terms of, what's the-
Gaining the diversity, I think.
Reach the community in terms of what? What do you want to reach them, just in terms of information? Yeah, yes, I understand. But I'm saying, do you want to-
Using that as an example, this body here, building a workforce-
Yes.
You need to know what's out there right now. Basically, it's word of mouth. It's what came up. How are you going to read, how are you going to reach members of these particular groups? Word of mouth. So that doesn't, that would be narrative if you want to look at. What is our process of our, how will we improve that? What is actually coming from the library, not from word of mouth?
Well, I think you're right that this work starts from the top down, and the director is in full support of the work. And in terms of employment, you know, those practices and, you know, systems are certainly going to be looked at as part of this process and the action plan. I can promise that.
Yeah, and we actually have touched on, we've touched on this also when we've talked about it as part of the director's feedback, and we made that comment last year, and we're making it again. So we haven't actually discussed that yet now as a board, but I want to, but we're going to be coming back to that, so, yeah.
We can adopt this today or postpone it?
Adapt.
The equity statement?
The agenda item of the-
The equity statement.
The equity statement. It's on the agenda for approval.
Well, we would just want to be clear. I thought we were saying that we were putting, that, do we want to take a vote on that endorsement? Is that what you're-
Just asking.
That's the question, yes.
Would you like to take a vote on the endorsement that we want to, okay?
Well, that's what the agenda is calling for.
Move the endorsement, that we endorse this statement? Thank you. Okay, coming back to that. And to forward it up to the director to take the next action steps?
Your motion?
Yes. I was just trying to say it in a way that it would be the motion, but if it wasn't clear-
Okay, I'll move that we adopt the racial equity statement that's been presented to us today.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Charlene.
And it was moved by Bill?
The rebel elders are over there.
Moved by Bill?
I will say, having been on the library board for 20 some odd years, that the faces and sexes of the people working there have changed dramatically in 25 years or more.
That's true.
It's much more colorful, more diverse. There are both men and women and probably transgender or bisexual or somebody in there that I don't know. And I did see somebody at one of the staff meetings that I thought was on the borderline of, oh crap.
LGBT?
Autism, yeah. So, so we don't always see all the people that work here. There are jobs behind the scenes.
Yeah.
I can't help but remember when we were presented with a, I forget what it's called, but you can dial in and get any language, and if we have a patron that needs something translated, and we voted on that. And when we were voting on it, somebody in staff said, but we don't know, we don't need, and they started rattling off at least 15 different languages that our staff spoke and could handle. And I've never forgotten that because just what you're saying, when we started, it wasn't there at all. And now-
Yeah.
It's been exciting to see the changes.
Well, I was glad we could get outreach to other languages, but we sure didn't need very many.
I do, I do have, the lead of that particular group tells me it's the Government Alliance on Racial Equity which provided their training with the grant from the California State Library. So it was the Government Alliance on Racial Equity oversaw the training.
Okay.
You guys asked for more information about-
I was asking specifically about the CREI training.
Does that answer your question now?
No, no.
No, okay.
That's the group that sponsored it, but I was interested more in, you said a little bit about it, it was two days.
The training itself.
You know, I don't, not trying to spend a lot of time on it, but training is what we're talking about these days, and if this is a nugget-
Yeah.
That could have application to other departments, other situations and circumstances, I personally would like to know more about it.
That request in the minutes, then.
And that's why I was saying, that was my question, well-stated, but I wondered the same thing. I wondered between the training and how we got to this, you know?
And we can have a representative or several from that committee speak to that next month.
That might be helpful.
That would be good. Is the assumption that we're going to have a September meeting?
We're getting to that.
Okay.
Okay. Next?
Okay, so item number 10 is asking for your approval of our fiscal year 2020, 2021 library goals for city council review. Due to timing, these were due, so they were submitted. It's, what I want to point out with this, this is tied, these are our library goals and actions tied to city funding we've received. As you see this year, you know, the city council has five distinct strategic goals themselves.
Right.
So I think it's really exciting that we are at a place as a library where our library and the work that it's doing meets a piece of each one of those goals, and-
At once, but at least twice.
Yeah.
That's great.
And we've now done this for the last year, the last two years, I believe, yes.
Yeah.
So it's great.
Exactly, yeah. So obviously, there's major initiatives that we'll be working on, including the CREI work. We are going to be redoing our story corner and craft area, as well as, due to a grant that was received, implement an early learning hub space in our civic center library. We are going to continue working on our O-Arts master plan for the arts that our Arts Commission and library staff completed and was passed by council in 2019. We will be working towards the redesignation of your Oceanside California Cultural District, as well as working on a revised policy to address public art in the city. We will be working on our grants. We did get a teens work program grant to hire 12 teen interns throughout the next nine to 11 months, so we've already started doing a lot of work on that. We are able to bring on a part-time professional assistant to help us oversee that. So one thing I'm very proud of us doing is looking for ways to bring on staff that's not city-funded. So we've gotten really creative about that. Not that, you know, we need city staff that's funded, absolutely, but if there's something special that we want to be doing, we're looking for ways to provide more.
And I think this is one of these areas where we want to try to make sure we really do outreach in terms of making these opportunities available to, I'm going to say, teens of color, because that has been an area that we have really been wanting to do more in.
And we have conversed with our HR department about having it be a flexible classification to reach out to kids that we feel would be the most dramatically affected by this opportunity, so.
Alma, are you looking for a motion on this to adopt?
I was just going back to see, what is the expectation here?
I move to approve the review of the library goals-
I second it.
Consistent with the city council.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on your list is approval of our strategic planning timeline. Uh, we had institute, we had instituted, uh, initial planning meetings in February and March. Uh, unfortunately, we had to put our energies elsewhere for the last few months. Um, but we were wanting to get back on track with our strategic plan for the years twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are meeting this Wednesday to get back on track with our strategic planning. So what we've brought before you is a, a timeline of what that planning process will be. Uh, we, of course, bring that back to you every month at your board meeting to update you on our progress. And then that, of course, will be, a final draft will be presented to you after that process. And then that, um, plan will need to go to the city council as well.
My question that I had is, is there any opportunity or been any discussion about looping back in with any community input?
Yes, and that is something that we're going to be addressing on Wednesday as well. Um, you know, usually that would look like us being out in the community, speaking with people. So, you know, um, we're going to have to readdress that to get, to get input. As you remember, this is part of our ten-year, uh, community input work. And, um, Chair Cisco Smith, you did a great deal of work with that seven years ago to get us incredible community input and send us on a really clear path that was guided by our community. We're seven years later, um, you know, we're still using that input, but we're also, like you said, needing to, um, obtain additional input, especially now as things have, have adjusted. And so, yes, that will certainly be a part of, of our planning and our, and our strategies.
CJ, this is the last one?
Yes.
Okay, this was for two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty.
Yes.
Now we're talking about twenty through?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Um, is any, are you ready to, with the understanding that there will be some continuing attention to probably looking at community involvement, would you be ready to approve this? I'll entertain a motion. On item number eleven, the strategic planning timeline.
Did you make that motion?
I did.
I don't think that was clear to her.
Sorry?
Did it again. So moved.
Second.
Here, wait a minute.
Charlene made the motion. I seconded.
Okay, I didn't, okay, and I didn't hear, so that's why I was just, you seconded.
I'm sorry.
All right. And you have it, Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor?
We're getting tired. It's after our four. Time for tea. Aye.
All right, and, uh, we are on item twelve.
Yes. So this is some, some consideration on, um, it's a discussion and approval of updated meeting dates and times. So given that we'd need to be meeting in the city council chambers because, uh, your, uh, meeting does need to be televised. Unfortunately, the council chambers are not available the fourth Monday of every month. Um, to get back to a consistent meeting, we will need to find a common date for monthly meetings. Uh, the, two of the options available are the fourth Tuesday and the fourth Thursday, both at two P M.
And that would be in order to be here? Okay, the fourth what?
The fourth Tuesday or the fourth Thursday.
Tuesday works better for me.
Tuesdays are fine for me. Tuesdays.
Two.
That's fine.
Need to make, it said to approve recommendation?
So it would be fourth Tuesdays?
The fourth Tuesdays.
So if you were to approve that, your next meeting would be September twenty-second at two P M.
Oh, gosh, wait a minute.
September twenty-second at two P M.
Look, I think, the twenty-second.
That's based on the room availability, right CJ?
But you're saying it would, that you know that because that, that is one of the choices when it would be available.
Yes, the two choices that, um, the city clerk's office offered were the fourth Tuesday or the fourth Thursday.
This would be for September, October and November?
Yes.
Okay.
But particularly, so September twenty-second, uh, I could, I know now I will be having a, some neck surgery September twenty-one. So just letting you know that I might, if I'm not here, but I'll let you know ahead of time.
Okay. That sounds like fun.
Yeah.
Alma, do you need three for a quorum?
Yes.
Do you need three for a quorum?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, all right, so but are we, we need, go ahead.
Excuse me, um, did we look at anything for like the third week of the month as, so that Alma could be with us?
Well, it's just whether, um, whether the council chambers would be available. If not, then you'd have to find another venue, which is a challenge. Isn't that what I heard, understood? So it would just be September. That might be a problem for me otherwise.
Well, that's what I was thinking, maybe the third week of September would have a date.
But I heard that then that's the challenge of finding a venue.
Yeah, I, I inquired as to which, um, dates would be available for all three months. And they gave me the, um, fourth Tuesdays or Thursdays. They did say the third Mondays, but only two months would be available. It wouldn't be available next month on the third Monday. So.
I think, I think, I think that's fine. I think we should go with the fourth Tuesdays. This Tuesdays are convenient for most people, even would be for me, that September just happens to be a fluke. So shall we, uh, have a motion then, uh, since there's a recommendation is needed?
So moved.
Okay, it's been recommended and moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Fourth Tuesdays. All right. All right.
Uh, how much are we paying for the TV aspect of this?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the, I didn't hear the question.
How much we are paying to be televised?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think Sherry said it was three or four hundred dollars.
We don't know exactly how much, but it could be around five hundred dollars.
Each time?
Yes, but we do not know the exact amount yet.
Um, it, it might be helpful to know, um, there is some, some COVID funding that we would be, um, using for the, for the televising.
Okay.
It, not out of the libraries.
Pardon me?
We could get reimbursed through the COVID funding for it later.
Good. Yeah. All right, um.
We just don't want it to come out of the library budget.
Right, right. All right.
You know, oh, you're going to be a good member.
Okay, I'm sorry, twelve, thirteen, layers on reports. Now we can slip through those quickly.
So the only, uh, report for that, uh, Sherry gave me her report. Uh, the Sarah Cooperative Library System did meet, um, and that's for San Diego County and Imperial County. Uh, the state has cut the budget in half, but Sarah has some reserves to make up the difference.
Wow.
Um, a little bit history on Sarah, that's been, uh, that cooperative has been in place since the nineteen seventies. It was developed to bring equity, um, throughout the, the counties. Um, for example, Imperial County has some career online high school students that want to, to participate in the online high school program. So Sarah is going to contribute funds to support their efforts in that. They also coordinate the overdrive platform.
What, what is the high school again, so that, what is that?
Career Online High School.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Uh, which we participate in as well and have had two graduates.
Yeah, oh, great, so that will continue?
Yes.
Well, and Sarah has paid scholarships for librarians to get their masters, um, several. Cause I was on the Sarah board for many years and it's the advisory board. And that's been a big part of Sarah has been.
Yeah.
To encourage library, uh, degrees.
Very good, thank you. You want to go to fourteen?
Okay, uh, so for fourteen, project status, uh, we have picked our, selected our consultant for our, uh, story corner and our early learning hub. So we've been meeting with her and, and starting to, to get ideas percolating. That happened through, uh, or we're, right now, we're working on a professional services agreement through the city attorney for bringing on that, um, that consultant. Uh, we had a really great meeting with the city engineer to talk about these amazing projects that are happening. Uh, you know, we were in the CIP budget to redo the Civic Center Library Courtyard. So we are going to be redoing the courtyard, the story corner and children's area as, just the story corner area in children's, um, and implementing a resource hub in the Civic Center Library. So we've got some big CIP, um, projects happening and, and have kicked that off with the city engineer. And he offered his, his great support with, with anything we might need for those projects.
So is that on facilities or are you referring to our project status?
Uh, I was.
Think?
Project, those really are, are some big projects coming up. So it really works for either, but I have something else under facilities I'd like to share, uh, share. Um, and let's see, we are also working on the city's civic arts policy. That's an update of a nineteen ninety-seven art in public places policy. So your arts commission is working on that. Uh, as far as B, which is programs and events, I think I've mentioned several of those. But of special note once again are the One Book One San Diego programs that we're working on that will be happening in September as well as our Japanese language programming. Uh, so C is facilities. So we have, yes, uh, so with city council approval on September ninth, uh, we will be relocating our Reed's Learning Center. Um, there is a really dire need for our city's housing department to have additional space. So, uh, we are, we are really excited about this opportunity. Um, you know, recently we did get a grant and buy new furniture and furnishings for our Reed's space. But it's not, it's not a wonderfully functional space. Um, so most of what we purchased can be moved to another location. Uh, very quickly, city property management supported us in efforts, as did the assistant city manager, to find another space. Uh, that space is located at eight oh four Peer View. It's directly, uh, east from the fire station, so it's.
East from the fire station?
It's from Fire Station One. So there's the Oceanside Museum, there's the library, the Oceanside Museum of Art as you're heading east, and then the fire station, and then eight oh four Peer View. So it is.
Across the street?
It is right across the street. Um, it's a recently renovated space. And the, um, the renter put a great deal of energy and funding into renovating it. It's got five separate, uh, meeting rooms that will just make, and the experience for our learners and tutors, just something completely different than what they've experienced. It's really a space that speaks to, uh, their, their privacy and it's a space that they can be really proud of. And we, the library, saw this as a great opportunity to support another, you know, city department with their really dire needs. And then finding a space that we feel, um, will work even better than, than what we have right now. So we're, we're excited about that, um, and that will be going to the city council on September ninth.
And Chelsea is already involved in that too, right?
Yeah, we've, we've met there several times with the, with the broker and the tenant and, um, look forward to bringing you more information about that.
Was this an old house or?
It's actually a, um, it's a tenant-built, like it's, I guess, upstairs, there used to be some political offices. It's kind of, council member, you might know better.
It's a multi-tenant, two-story building. So there's offices that vary, over the years, they've been used as investigative offices for the police department, the various things. So there's, uh, there's several tenant spaces in the building upstairs and downstairs.
And we went out the whole building?
No.
Oh. Darn.
But it does have two exits. It's got, you know, it's very accessible, um, ve- very clean, very nice space.
We'll have the lower, lower level, yeah. So that's going forward to be approved, what, did you say you had a date, I heard?
September nine.
So is it, is this directly across the street from the fire department?
Yes.
Yes.
On the north side of this.
On the north side of Peer View.
Yeah, northeast.
Eight oh four.
Okay, thank you, all right, that's, I'm just clarifying.
And you don't have to sell me anymore on it, CJ.
Sold, good, okay. Uh, so fourteen D is your library staffing?
That's a good question when I ask those facilities, I don't know, um, the, I don't know if this would be facilities or not, but it's the condition of the sidewalks and all, out front, in front of the library that are all pitted and have they, did I walk over them and they've been pretty bad-looking for some time?
Right out, right out front of the Civic Center Library? Okay, I can, I can reach out to maintenance and inquire.
I don't know if that's part of public works or I just don't, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we are, where are we? Oh, I'm sorry, what's going on?
So, so fourteen D is your library staffing and recruitment update. Uh, we did have, um, two staff depart, but then we were able to bring them back on as part of grant projects. And, uh, we also, there's an adjustment, your recruitment's in process, there's actually two. So you're going to bring the library and one in youth services hub grant up to recruitment in process as well as the library technician in support services. We, um, are working on filling that, uh, role as well.
So those all be recruitments through the city?
Uh, the youth services hub grant is through a grant and then the library technician is a city employee. We're, we're going to be able to fill that city position. Uh, as you can see, staff has been taking, uh, the opportunity to do a lot of professional development.
Yeah.
To the great benefit of, of our community. So you see, there's a very, very long list there. Uh. Really, really varied trainings that staff has been taking part in.
I, so, it's huge. I mean, has all of that already happened?
Yes.
All of this has happened?
Are most of them?
You go to some. And I.
I have a, I guess.
Who knew? I didn't know, who knew?
I have a question, what's a P R A X I S?
Leadership Through Crisis? Oh my gosh.
No, Rethinking Library. I don't know what that word is.
This is incredible.
Do you see it on there?
It's under, it says Rethinking Library halfway down, no, three quarters of the way down the page. The top of that page is G N C R T, President's Program. Praxis.
The page two, page, oh, G N, okay, the second page.
The Indian Library Association.
Rethinking Library Praxis.
Now what is it?
P R F, P R A X I S, that's what she.
That's what I said.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
So, so in its definition, it's from, it's from the Greek, the process by which a theory, lesson, or skill is enacted, embodied, or realized, may also refer to the act of engaging, applying, exercising, realizing, or practicing ideas.
Thank you, I couldn't find it in my dictionary.
Because it's Greek, I guess. It's close to the word practice.
Yeah.
So I, I, it's amazing that all this has been done.
And then F there, Public Relations, so we are expecting a K-O-C-T video next week that will go out to all of the schools and, and principals, as well as be posted on our website and other channels, and it's really a comprehensive, this is our library system, these are our locations, this is what we offer, this is our programming, these are our e-resources, so we're really excited about that, it's going to be able to be used in a lot of different ways. We have a new e-card, so people can go online to our website and get a library card right there, they, they don't have to come in, they can use our services remotely and get a card at the same time. Of course, students in the district can use their student ID, so we encourage them to do that. We've been doing home delivery, curbside, one of the things we wanted to point out in our curbside pickups and our home deliveries, we did add some information about our friends of the Oceanside Public Library who do so much to support our programs and, and our funding, who have not been able to have their book sales in the same way, so they're not making the funding to support us. So we put some information in our deliveries and curbsides, and we've received, I think, numerous donations, 18 new memberships just in the last three days, as well as close to, I have close to $700 in donations, so that's great. They also are kicking off a book, a book in a box.
Bag tomorrow.
Want to, want to speak to that?
Buy the box, drive through books.
Buy the box.
Buy the box, yes.
I would have.
Where you can go to their storage facility at 602 and buy a box of books, so, look.
Or a sack of paperbacks.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, fiction or, yeah, genre.
You may end up with a couple of books that you've read before.
Well, I was talking to Sherry about it, and she said if you had already read half of them, it was still a good book.
That's right.
So there you go.
Okay, where are we?
15.
Yes. We have, any announcements or anything from board members?
All my classes, we're going to start again in October, State College, we're all going to be virtual, and so this type of thing, it was something that CJ said, is that I used to have to drive to different areas in San Diego County to hold the classes for students who live in the area, now they can, they can take the class anywhere, and so I actually thought this was going to be a little more, so, and I'll be done in a.
Cool, good.
The only thing I wanted to mention for the board members particularly is that we have, Paula and I have met, we have gone over the director's feedback form.
Oh, yeah.
And so we're going to bring that forward for the next meeting. Okay, so we'll send that to you, and Bill, I will send the information to you, so you'll be familiar with what we're talking about, okay?
It's a little hard to remember what we've forgotten from March or something.
Okay, City Council, is there anything, announcements or anything, sir?
I think we're getting the bums rushed by Planning Department for their Planning Commission meeting tonight, so I just want to say that I have some City Council agendas that aren't this thick, so I'm not sure where you get all your information, but you get information, that's for sure. It's, it's dizzying, oh, you get it, it's library, you've got a lot of words down there. Anyway, thank you.
All right, anything?
Say there's an election, and it happens to be that, for some reason, every single council member's running for something, so.
I am real upset.
Okay, and? And teen partners, anything more, nothing? Do you want to, everybody know what that is? I mean, you know, teen partners?
I think, I think it's if there is a teen partner present that wants to, to mention something, I think that would, that's what it refers to.
Okay.
A teen volunteer.
Yeah, is it, do we have a pretty good, strong group?
That was resulting from you guys' request for the, when you did your reviews, to get other groups involved.
So I was just saying, do we have as a group, is it a significant core yet, or?
No, I ask Amy every, prior to every meeting, if she has anybody who wants to come, and so far, she hasn't.
Of the, from the teens?
Yes.
Do you have a sizable teen core group though? Yes, okay, all right. Okay. Anything else, other, no other? The other is that we are adjourned.